I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always love it when the kids are here because they say the pledge of allegiance louder than anybody else. All right, uh, we will go to roll call.
Councilman Godbo.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg is absent. Excuse Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Markowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. All right, for special presentations and announcements, we'll bring up Amanda Fawnan and Daryl Beebe from the Wayne Westland Community School District. Then you can have the lectern or the cordless, whatever you prefer. Okay. Give it a second to... There we go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here tonight to present students from Wayne Westland Community Schools for the Compassion Project. This is our first students of the 23-24 school year. So first, we have from Wildwood Elementary, Caleb Eichenberg. Caleb, if you could come on up to the...
You're not in trouble. It's okay. You can come up.
Do I have to stand by me?
He's making me nervous.
Okay, and so Caleb's compassionate act is that he helped a classmate with a math puzzle. So if we could all give Caleb a round of applause.
There's that golden smile.
All right, next we have from Roosevelt McGrath, we've got Sadie Strong. Sadie, will you come on up? Thank you. In Sadie's act of kindness, Sadie helped clean up trash in her classroom without being asked.
That's a big one.
And our next student is Aubrey Hackerthorn from PD Graham Elementary. And Aubrey asked a student who was crying in the office if she was okay and asked if she wanted a hug to feel better. And then if we can also just give a warm thank you, we have a lot of staff here this evening from Wildwood, Roosevelt, McGrath, and PD Graham Elementary. If you are a staff member, could you also come up and stand with your students this time? And now I believe our students will be receiving certificates from our city council.
Aubrey? Check this out. I'm gonna hand it to you.
Let's hear it again for a while.
And we're gonna ask our students and families if you can just go out to the hallway. We're gonna get some photos before we send you on your way. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, now we'll move to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my left? Input on the agenda. Is there anybody on my right? All right, we'll close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Or?
Motion from Councilwoman Sampe, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any changes to the consent calendar? Are any changes? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Traffic control order 2023-09, install one handicap parking sign in front of 35022 Nancy. Approval of bid for the purchase of a network video recorder for the city clerk's office. Administration recommended Ektron Integrated Security Systems in a total amount not to exceed $50,650 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney. Approval of purchase of an additional storage server for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Purchase from CDWG in the amount not to exceed $8,890. Approval of Police One Learning and Training Subscription with Lexipool LLC to com... I'm sorry, to complete various educational credit requirements required by the state of Michigan. The subscription shall be for a one-year period beginning in December in an amount not to exceed $6,281.80. Approval of a law enforcement training expense for department-wide training sessions at the police department. The recommended vendor Mc... McEnlow Associates in the amount not to exceed $7,000. Approval of request from the Westland Community Foundation to waive the administrative city hall rental fee to hold their annual Christmas toy drive benefiting disadvantaged children of Westland on November 28, 2023, 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM in City Hall. The rental fee of $375 for a nonprofit package deal is waived. Let me make sure I got that right. Yes. Last item approved on the consent calendar, approval of transfers of hazards and board ups to the 2023 property taxes for the winter 2023 tax bill. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
I have a motion from Pro Tem Markowski, supported from Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Due business.
Item one, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held October 16, 2023.
Motion from the Pro Tem?
Support.
Support from Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbo.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg is absent. Excuse Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Markowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Abstained due to absence.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. Due business. Item two, introduction of ordinance 248A114 in ordinance to amend Chapter 27 of the Westland City Code by amending Article 6 to add Sections 27 through 36 to provide existing marijuana microbusinesses, conditional licenses, and an opportunity to operate as Class A marijuana microbusinesses consistent with Cannabis Regulatory Agency rules.
So...
Support.
Motion from Councilman Godbo, supported from Councilman McDermott. Mo?
Uh, thanks, Council President. This amendment just adds to our existing Westland Marijuana Business Ordinance language that would allow the microbusiness licensee, which we have a licensee holder that you approved several months ago, to be able to operate the new Class A microbusiness that the state Cannabis Regulatory Agency has created to expand business opportunities for the microbusinesses. The two major changes highlighted in your memo. This would allow for the grow of 300 plants as opposed to 150 plants. And another big change would allow the Class A, the new Class A microbusiness license holder to purchase a variety of different marijuana products in addition to plants from other adult-use licensed growers. Happy to answer any questions. We already have a license that has been taken, approved by the council, and this is just allowing him at this time to operate and hold this additional state license. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Is any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Due business. Item three, approval of proposed site plan modification for previously approved mosque addition.
37775 Palmer Road, south side of Palmer between Hickson and Newburgh. This is planning department number 0421C. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion? Motion from Councilwoman Sampe.
Support.
Support from Councilman McDermott. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this property is approximately three and a half acres in area. Uh, it's currently zoned R2. That's a single-family residential district. It's just south of Palmer there, highlighted in yellow on your screen. Uh, the mosque is currently approximately 9,000 square feet in area. Uh, the building was originally built to accommodate a Lutheran church. Uh, the petitioner tonight is requesting site plan approval for a 450-square-foot addition for additional restroom space. A 3,000-square-foot new building to accommodate a prayer room and an additional 275... Two... I'm sorry, yeah, 275-square-foot addition for a vestibule area. Uh, this is where that large 3,000-square-foot addition would be held or constructed, and this is just a close-up of, of, uh, the mosque building itself. On March 6th, you may remember this year that you approved a site plan for similar additions. However, the petitioner has requested to modify these plans. The modification adds that 450-square-foot addition to the northwest of the building, approximately in, in this area over here. I'm sorry, north, yeah, northwest, uh, to accommodate that restroom space. And then previously, the 3,000-square-foot addition was an attached addition. Uh, today, it's being presented approximately 10 feet away from this building, so it's a detached, um, new building. Uh, everything else in terms of parking setbacks, lot coverage, and things like that comply with the zoning ordinance. It's important to note, I forgot that the addition was previously approved at 18 feet, uh, and today is proposed at 27 feet. Uh, that still complies with the 30-foot maximum, uh, in the R2 district. The planning commission reviewed this at its, no, October 11th meeting. Uh, no residents came out, uh, in support or opposition. I know the applicants are here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, the petitioners are here? Are you the petitioners? Is there anything else you want to add, or did Mo cover everything for you?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Mohamed Siddiki. I'm the site design engineer for this project, and our architect is art of town, so... But if you have any question, we will try to answer.
Very good. All right, is there anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Due business. Item four, approval of site plan and special land use for proposed drive-through restaurant Long John Silver's. Demolition and rebuild located at 461 South Wayne Road, east side of Wayne, south of Cherry Hill. This is planning department number 0741A. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Sampe. Support from Pro Tem Markowski. Mo?
Thank you. Uh, the property here is about 42... Well, about an acre in size. It's outlined in, in yellow on your screen. It's zone CB1. That's our low-intensity commercial business district. Uh, currently, the site contains an existing building owned and occupied, uh, by the petitioners as a Long John Silver's drive-through restaurant. The petitioner is requesting to demolish and rebuild, uh, the existing drive-through restaurant. Um, in, in similar fashion, it'll operate as a, um, drive-through Long John Silver. Uh, property to the north is zone CB1, uh, developed by Wendy's Drive-Thru Restaurants. South is CB1, uh, developed by Captain J's, which we, uh, last year approved a drive-through operation for. Uh, property to the west is Wayne Westland Federal Credit Union. And to the east here, there's a, um, a church and, uh, we all know Marshall, um, Marshall Elementary. The future land use designation for this site is neighborhood commercial slash office services. This site plan was approved on March 7th of 1977, before I was born. There are no modifications being proposed to the existing curb cuts. Uh, there's two curb cuts here that will continue to operate with the new site plan as a one-way in, one-way out. Uh, there's 26 parking spaces, which complies with the zoning ordinance. The ordering menu will be tucked and hidden in the back of the building. This is the new site plan that's up on the screen. All of the bulk regulations in the CB1 district, like height setbacks and a maximum lot coverage and things like that, are being complied with. The planning commission did, um, condition the, uh, recommendation to approve the site plan with some additional landscaping being installed here, uh, in the lan... in the grass-planted island fronting Wayne Road, which the petitioner did comply with and has sent since, uh, a landscape plan to the planning department. This is what the building will look like once constructed. Um, and again, similar to the previous item, the planning commission did hold a public hearing and, and recommended approval at its October 11th planning commission meeting. Thank you.
All right. Petitioners, come on up to the hot seat. Before I release the council upon you, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, only if you have questions. My name's Greg Minshell.
All right, very good. Is there anything from the maker?
Yes. Um, thank you, sir, for being here. This is really exciting. The rendering looks beautiful. So it, based on what we're getting information, you'll have a drive-through restaurant. Is this gonna be a combination of, of also dine-in as well?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, almost exactly as it is right now.
Okay, so it's similar nature. Okay, do we have an idea of what it's gonna be?
It's gonna be a Long John Silver.
Oh, it is. It is gonna be a Long... Oh, I thought it was a demolition. Okay.
No, it's simply a rebuild of what's there.
Oh.
The buil... The existing building is old, out of date, inefficient, and they've... They're just going through and approving their properties.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I'm sorry that I misunderstood.
No, that's quite all right.
Well, that's even more exciting because we, we like that restaurant, so I was thinking something else is coming in there.
So do I.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, perfect. So it's just a, an update of the building.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Uh, 1977, Wowzers, right? I wasn't born, but thank you. Were you on council yet? Okay. Oh, if you can say I wasn't born, it's all, it's all in fun and games here, but, um, I'm just curious as to, you know, uh, obviously, we always want to bring up to date our buildings, and as Councilwoman Sampe said, it, the rendering is just beautiful, just fantastic. I am just curious about your timeline. That's always something that sticks out to me.
It's gonna be dependent on weather and permits. We're probably not gonna start demo right now.
Sure, wonderful. Well, we look forward to it, and any kind of revitalization's always excellent, and, uh, you know, I think a lot of people actually venture into the city of Westland just for the Long John Silver's, because they're few and far between these days, so...
Thank you.
Good luck, and I will be in support of this, uh, item.
All right. Any other discussion from the council?
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, guys, for your investment in the city. Uh, three questions. Uh, number one, it looks like the front facade, is that brick or is that siding?
Siding.
That's siding, so the brown you see there is siding.
Oh, brown. Bryce, do you know if that's a little brickwork or is it siding?
Looks like fibrous wood.
Bryce believes it's brickwork.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, question number two, I know in the current, because I live over near that area, the current location has parking on both sides of the, of the, when you enter the lot, and then on the other side where the drive-through's at, it looks like that parking is going away?
Yes, it's, it works a little more efficiently this way. Drainage works a little better. The building's slightly larger, so it gives us a, a little better drive-through operation. So we, we gave a lot of thought to that. Plus that, the entrances are all on, on what would be the south side, so having parking on the north side makes it rather awkward.
And then the other question, and I don't know if... I want to say this was asked at planning commission. Mo, please correct me if I'm wrong. It butts up to the Marshall property, and eventually, you know, Marshall could be designated for redevelopment of some kind, depending on what the school district wants to do and, and how we zone it. Just hypothetically speaking, if it was residential in the future. Is there something to control the smell coming out of the fast-food restaurant? Because I know the Burger King up the street, we've gotten a few complaints over the years about... And having worked at a Burger King before, I can certainly understand that. Is there something, though, that would, you know, control the smell so it doesn't waft into...
I've been a fry cook, too. I think that, I think the kitchen equipment that we buy today has much better filtration.
Okay.
That's the best I can say. I don't think you can totally eliminate it because you are frying a lot of fish, and that has a certain odor, but I think it will be filtered better than it is now.
Okay.
It won't be perfect.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you for your investment. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion from the council? I think the smell coming out is what attracts people into the store.
Pump a little extra out.
All right, any, any, any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Due business. Item five, approval of proposed land division. 7300 North Merriman Road, east side of Merriman, north of Warren. This is planning department number 1199D. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Is there a motion? Motion from the Pro Tem. Is there support? Support from Councilwoman Sampe. Mo?
Thank you. Uh, we all know where this property is. This is the, uh, former Hawthorne Valley Golf Course site with the red line running down the middle. Um, that is, I'm gonna just refer to it as 0589 when I'm talking here. Um, and this is owned by the city. Uh, the city's planning department is requesting to split it down the middle, um, just sort of to the west of where the river runs through it. Um, the city's intention is to donate the resulting parcel B to Wayne County, who will give it or transfer it to Wayne County Parks, and it will become part of the Heinz Drive Park Network. In return, uh, the county has offered to give us this sort of triangular-shaped 001, which we will combine with parcel A here, and also this one over here that we own as well. Um, and that will create a parcel that the, uh, team that is working on the, uh, new fire station, uh, wants to create here. And Wayne County is on board. Um, the planning commission reviewed this on August 2nd, and there was a gap, uh, in the time period before bringing it, bringing it to council to kind of get everything squared away with the, with the county. Uh, so now that's over with, and I'm presenting it here on behalf of the administration, um, to move it forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Pro Tem?
Hi, good evening. Thank you again. Through the chair to, um, planning director, Ayu. Um, just for a little bit of clarity, because, you know, it's a wonderful map, but it, it, sometimes it's a little hard to read. Um, and just for the folks at home, this is the... There we go. Love it. Thank you. I, you know, I have short enough eyeballs as it is, but, um, this is the proper part of the Hawthorne Valley property that would, would have been considered the golf course, right? Okay, so, and, um, I know there's been a lot of discussions in the past about can we revitalize the golf course? Can we maintain the golf course, things like that, and, um, as we all know, that's in a floodplain, so it was kind of determined that that would be quite costly, um, for anybody to, to undertake, right? So it's not buildable land. This is, you know, floodplain, wetland area that'll just become what it should have been probably in the first place. Okay, wonderful. I just wanted to have that clarity because, you know, we certainly don't want to be, um, eliminating opportunities to build, right? So, okay, thank you.
Councilman McDermott?
Through the chair to Mo. Did the county say they were gonna do any...
Did the county say they were going to do any mitigation of the flooding back there only because we've gotten concerns from residents who abut up to that property, like mosquitoes in the summertime when the water level gets really high and then the mosquitoes breed in there? Did the county say that we're going to do any kind of mitigation to deal with the constant flooding back there?
During this project here that I'm presenting, we did not talk about that at all. I do know that the county is aware of some of those issues that you have brought up and oftentimes contacted Vic to do some maintenance back there and things like that, but we have not discussed that particular issue, no.
Okay, and then my second question, did the county talk about putting any kind of, like, connector trail system back there?
No, not during these discussions, not at all.
Okay.
They did inquire about it a while ago, maybe two years ago. I don't know, maybe some of you remember that we did a split up here, kind of where Liberty Street is up here, and that was discussed early stages, that it should be parkland because some of the things that were just mentioned, but nothing related to trails being constructed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Signaled dissent, most carried unanimously.
New Business, item six. Approval of proposed modification of a previously approved site plan for the conversion of a vacant church into a condo development located at 31463 Ann Arbor Trail, southwest corner of Ann Arbor Trail and Merriman. This is Planning Department number 1315B. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion from the Pro Tems, is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilman McDermott. Mo?
Thank you. The subject of property here is located on the southwest corner of Merriman and Ann Arbor Trail. It's about six acres in area. It's currently Zoned G.A.R., Garden Apartment Residential, and is currently developed with a vacant church building. It's always been Zoned G.A.R. The petitioner is proposing a two-part project, similar to what was previously approved. Phase one is to repurpose the existing church into 24 apartment units, including the construction of a, I'm sorry, there's no second, there's no second floor. I'll talk about what you previously approved in a second, but it's going to remain one-story with 24 apartment units. Phase two proposes deconstruction of six buildings around the perimeter, kind of see them over here, that contain a total of 43 condo units. The application is requesting site plan approval today for both phases. The same project was previously approved March 21st of 2022, so it has since expired. The site plan remains similar to what you previously approved. However, the units has increased from 64 to 67. The design has changed relative to the elevations. It was more of a modern design that you approved last year, and with the new investors that were brought on, they want to build something that fits the character of the neighborhood more neatly as opposed to this modern design here. There has also been new investors that I just mentioned, and the last aspect is, I just mentioned that the church building was supposed to get a second floor. That's not going to happen with the site plan here. Want to explain the two phases in just a little bit more detail here. In phase one, the petitioner's going to convert the existing one-story to those 24 one-bedroom apartment units. That will be EPIS and composite siding. It'll look similar to what you see on your screen there. And in phase two, the six buildings will be two stories, 43 apartment units with a mix of two and three bedroom units with 1.5 attached car garages for each. And that will be a mix of brick and stone on the first floor and a majority of siding on the second floor. The site will utilize one curb cut here at Ann Arbor Trail and will eliminate some of the other ones over here. The petitioner proposes landscaping along Ann Arbor Trail and Merriman, which they need to comply with stormwater ordinance in the form of rain gardens. That's where the landscaping will be along those two roadways. All of the required, bulk requirements, lot size, separation distances for the various buildings, parking, lot coverage, building heights, minimum dwelling size are being complied with. And similar to the other cases, the planning commission reviewed this at its October 11th planning commission meeting, and is recommending approval. The two applicants are in the audience and can answer any questions, and so can I. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get the applicants to come up. So, the good news is you saw three other people take their test, so you kind of know what's happening now. So, do you have anything you want to add before I turn it over to the council for their questions?
We're excited to be here, and we're here to answer any question you guys have.
Very good. Pro Tem?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being in attendance. Happy to see that this is going to move forward. I was getting a little worried. But I do have a question because I'm failing to recall, it just might be since it was a bit ago, I thought the original plan was to turn the vacant church property into condominiums as well. Was it, wasn't it a fully condominium project before?
Well, we went out to do a condominium in the first building, but I guess with the architects and everything, it wasn't, didn't work out like the way we wanted to. So, we changed it around a little bit.
Of course, we want to give more variety of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, so we used that existing building to do the one-bedroom. It's more cost-efficient.
All right, wonderful. Thank you for explaining that a little bit further into detail. You know, when we have these changes, we've had a few condo developments that have converted to apartment. Of course, they didn't have additional units that they would be building, but I think quite a few of us were pretty disappointed that that was, you know, what the expectation was turned into a completely different thing. So, I'll be in support of it, but I certainly would like to see those condos built, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Anything from the supporter?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Thank you for bringing this forward. Again, a couple of questions. Number one is on the pricing, so there's one, two, and three units, obviously, that's varied pricing. Do you anticipate this being a more affordable development, or is this going to be higher end where it's priced at?
Well, definitely, we're going to be affordable. We're going to match what's in the city right now, what the going prices are. But it's going to be a little bit higher end than a build, but we're going to be in comparable rates to what's been built, you know, recently down the street from us and surrounding us.
Okay, so you would anticipate rent costs being a little higher than some of the neighboring apartments in the area?
Well, yeah, a little bit, but we, like I said, we've been comparing other prices that's built on, what's that, Ann Arbor Trail, a little bit further down.
Yep.
You know, so we're going to be in the ballpark, maybe a little bit less, you know, but right now, you know, cost of goods and everything's went up, so we haven't actually decided what our rent's going to be yet.
Okay, and did you have a timeline for groundbreaking and development?
Probably in April, most likely, starting April.
April of next year?
Yes.
Okay, and then through the chair to Mo, was it talked about at all, once we moved the fire station over to Hawthorne, was there any interest expressed in acquiring that property as well?
The applicants that are in front of you have expressed interest to purchase the fire parcel. However, that has to, as you know, go through an entire
Right.
procedure with purchasing and financing and things like that.
Great. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Hornbuckle?
Thank you. I appreciate what you guys are doing here. I recall at the Planning Commission, you said you were targeting older people, our older seniors here, correct? And hearing that you're going to have more of a higher pricing, I think that's kind of going to, you know, bother a lot of our seniors as they have fixed income and already hurting our ready. How do you feel about that? Is it?
I mean, we're here to, you know, we want to be a part of the community, and we're not here to overcharge or take advantage. We want to be a part of the community, and we're going to be giving out fair pricing.
Another question I have is, it looks like it's three or four exits. Are you getting rid of an exit now, right?
It's going to be one exit coming in, then off Merriman.
One exit, one exit, one entry.
Yeah, in and out.
On Ann Arbor Trail or Merriman?
Merriman, right?
Yeah, Merriman.
Merriman, yes.
There's going to be
No, Ann Arbor Trail.
One entrance and one exit in the same area right here off of Ann Arbor Trail. They wanted to do this to control access into the site.
I'm sorry, Ann Arbor Trail, not Merriman. I'm mistaken.
And next question, I think this was to the administration. Did we do a traffic study there? Because, you know, we got the Christmas lights coming, and our seniors coming in and out of that might be a little problem, problematic.
The zoning ordinance does not require a traffic study for this project. We did not conduct a traffic study. The two roads are main arterial roads, one being county for sure, maybe both. I personally believe that the traffic or the roadways can handle the additional traffic, but to answer your question, though.
All right, that's all I have for now, just wanted to.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Gabbout?
Thanks. So, I understand the church building itself is going to be apartments. The other units are those condominiums for individual purchase, or are those going to be rental?
Rent.
So, they're all rentals?
Correct.
So, they're all apartments, not condominiums?
Yeah, but when you have a second floor on one unit, a living space and sleeping space upstairs is considered a condo
Townhouse.
in construction term, I would think.
Uh, no.
Well, I mean, you can call an apartment building.
That's not the case. These are apartments, not condominiums. And, you know, we got caught in this before where we approved condominiums, and that's what caught my attention on this, is that these are apartments. They're not for sale units.
Yeah, they're definitely not for sale.
Okay. I won't be in support of putting another apartment complex in the city. Thanks.
Councilman Sampey?
Yeah, actually, Councilman Gabbout brought that up, too. I was just trying to get clarification on that. One of the things that we hear from people that are renters in the city is that they are not getting a good experience with maintenance, with property management, even with responding to the property and follow through with what needs to be done. So, this is a large unit of pieces here, and, I mean, I know you're trying to do the luxury feel. How are you guys going to handle that? Like, what is your plan? I don't know if you guys have any other properties in the city? Maybe you can address that?
Well, the reason why we picked out rentals, right, is you have, I think, a 50-unit that's a little bit further down on Ann Arbor Trail by Heinz Park towards Livonia, by Livonia, and they're all rentables, you know? So, we went ahead and changed it around. So, and there's one that just built, this is not even a year built, two-year built, and they just built another four or five units, same company. And the reason why we have one entry and one exit, so we can manage it better. We don't want people just driving around in that complex. You know, we want to be able to manage it. We're going to have our own community, our own property management company. We want people to stay. We're not there to have a dump site. We want to keep it well, very well-maintained, keep our residents there. And that's one of the reasons why we ended up changing it, is because the rentables down the street from us is randomly built.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a point on that. Those were not supposed to be rental units. Those were, we were told those were condominiums for sale units, and this is another, in my opinion, another attempt to skirt around, calling them condominiums when it's actually an apartment complex.
And before we bought this property, we have a letter from the city that you guys approved that site for apartments. Before I purchased that property, I have a letter from the city, it was approved. And that's one of the reasons why we invested all this money into this property, because it was, you guys approved it for renting. And this is prior to us buying it. And we brought this letter out here, and it was approved, you said yes.
Okay, so let's just, for the sake of a little bit of clarity here, through the chair to our planning director, I believe in the beginning of your presentation here, you did say that it's Zoned G.A.R., which is Garden Apartment, right? Can you give us, can you clarify what that zoning designation really means?
Sure. I don't know if that's what the applicant is or is not talking about. The site is Zoned G.A.R., which by right allows for an apartment complex or a condominium complex for that matter. It does not discriminate against one or the other. The only task or authority that I have is to present to you with a site plan that does or doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance. If it does comply, the city approves it. If it doesn't, then we don't. This one complies to the full length of the zoning ordinance and the Garden Apartment Residential District. There was a case, very similar case, where we actually accommodate even more the development down the street that's been mentioned by rezoning and doing a PUD and things like that, and it was presented as an owner-occupied, and during no mention of, during any of the public meetings, was it presented that it's going to be a rental? And I think that's the difference here, is that there is a dialogue of, yes, this is going to be a rental, and the other one was kind of done behind the scenes on the applicant's part. But to get back to the original question, if a site plan complies with the zoning ordinance, then the city should approve it because the uses are already listed and organized in a way that someone like them is purchasing a property, thinking that, okay, we can do Garden Apartment here, and all we got to do is comply with the zoning ordinance. And they've presented you with a site plan that does that.
Yeah, okay, so thank you. I think that's the key part of the information. While I'm not personally really excited about hearing that it's going into a rental fashion, it suits the property, right? So, if it's within the zoning, you know, I'll take my ball and go home and be sad, but, you know, I want to say that I at least appreciate your openness to tell us what your real intent of the property is, because that's what was not done previously, and I think that's what left a lot of us with a pretty poor taste in our mouth for some of these developments. So, I'm disappointed, but it suits the property. So, I will make peace with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is any other discussion from the council? Roll call.
Councilman Gabbout?
No.
Councilman Hersberger is absent. Excuse Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Pro Tem Markowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampey?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
New Business, item seven. Approval of site plan for proposed oil change shop, 6555 North Newburgh, southwest corner of Newburgh and Warren. This is Planning Department number 1701F. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion?
Some of it.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampey, is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilman Hornbuckle. Mo?
Thank you. This project is actually located within the Lowe's parcel that's outlined in yellow. The property was recently split off by you from the parent parcel, Lowe's. The buildable lot that was created is there in red. At the same meeting where you approved the land division, you also approved a rezoning. The site is currently and was currently CB3. Now, the red piece is CB4 Vehicle Service that was done to accommodate the oil change shop that was presented during these cases. Today, the applicant is requesting site plan approval to build a 1,500 square feet oil change shop. This is the site plan. It has three bays. You can kind of see the cars stacked there. Site access is really not going to change for the overall site. There are easements that are ready to be recorded that provide access to the Take Five Oil Change Shop. There's no additional curb cuts. There's no additional curb cuts. There will be a curb and, and gutters, um, constructed along the west property line here of this new site to kinda delineate and separate the oil change operations from the Lowe's. Uh, otherwise, the traffic and internal layout, uh, will continue to operate the same for Lowe's and, uh, the curb cuts along Newburgh. There are six off-street parking spaces, uh, which is more than adequate to accommodate the number of employees at the busiest time. Uh, the proposed building material, uh, which is really the reason why this is advanced so, um, long and, and why we're here is, is that they're building, a building that, uh, uses brick and stone materials as opposed to E F S. We wanted to get the site plan right. We wanted to get the building materials right. And, and they've done that for us throughout the negotiating stages. This is a rendering of what the building's gonna look like. Landscaping along Newburgh is, is pretty healthy and, and, and there's, there's a good amount there. They are adding some, uh, just to hide it a little bit more. And they're also, um, adding some within the site, particularly in this location to screen the dumpster from, uh, Newburgh, which they will have. It's, it'll be constructed, the enclosure out of some block, uh, you won't be able to see the dumpster and, and some landscaping that I mentioned. Um, there were some variances that were needed that have been approved by the zoning board last week. And that related to the property line extending out to Newburgh. And the city's engineering department wanted to take some right of way, which they offered to us. And that created a need for a front yard setback variance, which the zoning board granted. So that condition is no longer needed if it's in your packet. So the zoning board and the planning commission, uh, both approved this project earlier this month. I know the, um, applicant is in the audience. I think this is your twelfth meeting. So he and I are, are able to answer any questions you have.
Very good. Come on up, you're the next contestant. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, good evening, I'm Andrew Barclay. I'm sure you recognize me. Um, it's always a pleasure being here, I enjoy it. Um, Mr. Ayub's done a great job as usual. Um, I have nothing to add, just that we are excited that we're moving through this process and, uh, we look forward to, to being a part of the community. And I'm, um, happy to answer any questions you guys may have tonight.
Very good. Anything from the maker?
I said no, but there is. I just wanna thank you for sticking through the process.
Oh, no problem.
I'm excited about it. I know that we talked about it previously. I mean, people were talking about oil change shops, but it definitely is convenient for those that are heading from Lowe's. So thank you for sticking through the process.
Our business, we try to be convenient for our customers as possible.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
No problem, you're welcome.
Anything from the supporter?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here and sticking through this whole process. I just wanna confirm that this is just a quick oil change, no car stand overnight, no car repairs on site.
No, we're not, just oil change, you don't even have to get out your car. You drive in, get your oil changed, and you leave.
Yep, just wanna make sure, we constantly make sure that's, that's the case. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't do any overnight maintenance or anything. No, just oil change, one shot of wipers and filters.
Yep, well, thank you, I appreciate you here.
No problem.
All right, any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, well, now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone at my left? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lori Wilson. I am a resident of Westland. And I just want, I just have a few things to say. My father served in the Korean War in the Navy. I worked for the warfighters for forty-five years, building Hummers, two and a half ton, five ton, nine thirty-nine. I worked on the Abrams tank. So when I retired from my job in twenty nineteen, I found that there was a space in the city of Westland where I could continue supporting the warfighters and veterans. Well, two weeks ago, maybe three, the community I volunteer with, we asked, were we not going to be included in volunteering for packing the meals for the veterans? We were told we were no longer needed. I felt an enormous slap in the face for the four years that I had been doing this since I retired. So if it sounds like I'm getting a little upset, it's because I am. To be told after all this time, you're no longer needed, you're not required. You know, not even to come in and move a box, hand a box to a veteran. That I felt, and I feel, that this is disrespectful to us, the community that has been there from almost the start. So with that being said, Chief Dolly, thank you for coming down and speaking with us. We appreciate it. It's, I, we wish more people would be there. So when it happens in the spring, we plan on having a lot more there. Mr. Hornbuckle, thank you for showing up. We appreciate your presence and your comments and your help. For all who are running tomorrow, God, you're on your own.
Thank you. All right, anybody on my right? All right, anybody else in the audience, sir?
Hello, I'm Gary Kaufman, a Westland resident. And I'm not gonna use up all of my allotted time. I simply wanted to reiterate the same sentiment that I expressed the last time I participated in public comment here, which is that we have some amazing public servants here in Westland, uh, that I think folks ought to be grateful for. As I pan my vision across the dais at our wonderful council, I don't see anybody up here who I don't love and admire. And I want to especially cite two of you, Mr. LeBlanc and Mr. Hornbuckle, for having gone out of your way in the last two business days to do me an enormously helpful favor. And I'll also say that, uh, um, since I've known them, Mr. Hersberg and Mr. McDermott have been especially welcoming and encouraging to me, which I appreciate. So thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Sir?
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Vincent Harvey. I'm, uh, president of City of Westland here. I've got three, three things I want to, uh, bring to your, your all attention, actually particularly two of them. Uh, first, uh, the city has a, a very, an ongoing problem of these, uh, mini bikes that have been going up and down our streets, particularly on Avondale. It's become a, a, a cutthroat, ruthless speedway. They go through stop signs, most, most, a lot of them exceed thirty-five miles an hour, no lights. They drive up and down the street up till eleven o'clock at night. And I know you live in the neighborhood, Mr. LeBlanc. It's becoming, and the police department, you know, in their defense, there's no way they can get these people. I, um, I encourage council to come up with some kind of ordinance outlawing these bikes, these motorized mini bikes to be, uh, illegal, to be ridden on public streets in Westland as well as, in some cases, sidewalks. So, um, I almost backed over one back into my driveway at ten thirty at night. No lights, couldn't see them. So somebody's gonna get hurt. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not, something's gotta be done. And I know a lot of neighbors up and down Avondale are fed up. They, they pulled mufflers off of them, they run straight pipes, pull the baffles out. They are loud. So I implore, implore you to do something that your power that you can do. Uh, the second thing I have is, um, I have a question regarding, uh, the Ole Right's, uh, property on Wayne Road that, uh, it was demolished, uh, not too long ago. And according to records, the owner, Jorkin Properties LLC, is still owner of that property. Did, was any city funds, uh, used to take care of the blighted building, uh, the demolition? Or is that the, uh, uh, on the burden of the owner of that property? Because if any city funds were used, he is now currently selling that property. So it's a benefit to him that he don't have to, you know, pay for it if that's the case. If the city did produce any funds to, uh, demolish that building, he should, uh, that property owner, I believe, should be held responsible paying the city back of those funds used. Not sure if that's what, uh, you know, that took place or not. So that's kind of a question I'd like to know as a resident. And, uh, lastly, um, the, the fire department owns an educational trailer. Uh, it's got a digital bulletin board in the back end of it. And I'd like to know, it's two weeks ago, I'd like to know why it was allowed that, um, Ms. Stampy's, uh, campaign.
All right, sir, your, your time's up. But, uh, I think we heard your question, so, um, real quick, your time's up. But, uh, chief, real quick, um, I wanna address that 'cause there's questions here, and I got a lot of ups and downs here, so I, the clerk as well. It's already illegal for the mini bikes to be operating on the road if it's not a registered vehicle. And it's already illegal for them to be operating on the sidewalk. Is that, is my assumption correct?
Yes, um, so the problem is, you know, you don't know where they live, they take off, we can't catch them. So I think if, one of the four things why I do is maybe get out, if you see them, you know where they live, we can follow up to that address or something. But it's real tough to, even if they do, if they catch one, they hit the lights on, they're gone. And they're not usually wearing helmets. We don't wanna push them to drive any more reckless to have them get injured. So it's, it is a balance. Uh, but if we can know, we know what house they're going to, I mean, I've had conversations with the clerk about this too. We can follow up at that point and kinda narrow it down that way.
Okay, and, uh, the second thing for the Lee Wright's property, Mr. Fosso, and I believe we use Brownfield redevelopment, and will that go back?
No, we do not.
Oh, we do not Brownfield, but, go ahead.
We, we have a process where on, uh, certain ones likely rights, and there's another one that, that's just about ready to get demolished. Uh, we get a court order or authorization by the, uh, owner of the property to demolish and to place a lien for any city incurred expenses on the property with just that idea in mind that if the property gets sold, uh, the city would get paid back. So that's the process.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, for your last issue, I'll just direct you to the chief after, the, the fire chief after the meeting, and I think I'll be able to address that last question for you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we, I've, I've, we got a lot of feedback about the mini bikes, so I wanted to address that right now in front of everybody, so we got that. Um, who's next? Who's next? Mr. Gray? You guys flip a coin between the two of you. Say again?
Do you have a little H D M I port?
Uh, you can try.
We'll see if it hooks up.
Do we allow that for public? I don't think we'd not allow that, go ahead.
No, no.
You're the first one to try to do that, so.
All right.
Well, we do have, uh, a, a rule about banners and everything else, but, uh.
Yeah, I just wanna show you guys a picture real quick.
I believe the I T department also.
Yeah.
Excuse me, through the chair, I believe the I T department also has concerns about viruses and bugs that may be put in by un- unregistered entities.
H D M I port. It's an H D M I port, right?
Exactly.
Are you all right with that, Mr. Brown?
Okay.
I, I'm gonna have to hit the start button at some point here, so I'm gonna do that.
All right, well, I'm in for it, maybe, that, all right, well.
Yeah.
Well, I have a little picture from, uh, I'm just curious about like the leaf pickup, um, protocol right now. Um, I thought that it would be like, you know, like it used to be, like the garbage trucks with the big old like blower and everything, picking it up. I saw like Bobcats in my area, just randomly just scooping up little tiny bits of, uh, leaves. And we did not clear like anything on my street. I'm also curious about how much we're paying for that, um, per hour 'cause I know that we used to have that equipment in-house, and then we sold it, went over to like the garbage bags and everything, and now it's brought back, but it's like, you're not picking up anything. Like the Bobcats driving down the road, and then it's blowing into my grandpa's yard, like all of our neighbors' yards. Now we have to recoup it all. And on top of that, like, there's still so many, like, that's why I wanted to put it up there. And it gets a little odd to me, so I'm just curious about like the vetting process for that whole contract. And, yeah, like, why aren't we going for the vacuum that we used to have? Other than that, uh, I've tried to stay neutral over the whole, uh, you know, the whole campaigns and everything going on right now. But I heard some like really bad stuff recently, and I'm sure all of you guys have heard about it too. And I just wanna bring it to everybody's attention, like, nobody here is above the law. Or nobody here is like above everybody. And I'm just gonna end it with, uh, like our interim mayor said, a little paraphrase or whatever. But if, I feel like if you guys vote for, uh, vote him in, Westland will be D O N E, done. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, during your comments, can you just give a high level again on how the leaf program's working again? I know we went through it ad nauseam last council meeting, but just another highlight, that'd be appreciated. All right. All right, anyone else, uh, Mr. Powell?
Water tower.
Yep.
Uh, I'll be brief, I have the same question as, as usual. Uh, I just wanted to see if we have any update on, um, the previous study we did for the water tower, uh, the one we played jointly for. And then if there's any update on the current study, and that I know was allocated for, I know it hasn't been approved yet. But I just wanted to see if there's any updates on those two items, that's all I have.
As of date, I have not received any update from the last water tower study. And I haven't received any more information on the pending one.
Okay.
As of today's date.
Yep.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience? Sir?
Good evening, city council. Uh, Dan Statch out of Westland, just wanna talk about that, uh, veterans meal giveaway. Just wanna remind veterans that on the eighteenth of November, Wayne Fort Civic League, there'll be boxes of food and a turkey. Everything you need for your t- turkey dinner is gonna be in a box. It's gonna be mashed potatoes, it's gonna be stuffing, it's gonna be gravy, it's gonna be vegetables, all that. Take advantage of the program, it's a good program, even though some of us will not be able to partake in carrying veterans foods out. But I will because I'll be with Bova passing stuff out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close public comment and move to comments from the administration chief.
Hey, council president, we'll be real brief, too.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that? There, there'll be a recording, so you can, yeah. No, your, your, your time's up, three minutes is the allotted time. Yep. All right, let's, let's come back to order, 'cause I gotta wait for the chief to address the.
Hey, council president, yeah, just real brief on the leaf pickup. Uh, today was the first day it started. I'm not sure what neighborhood you live in, sir, but if you wanna just call the, either the mayor's office or Department of Public Service, they can walk you through in more detail the three different methodologies that are being used. With starting today, it was kind of a crazy day, the weather was, uh, the wind was blowing fifteen, twenty miles an hour. So, uh, the leaves were blowing all over the place, but it was the first day. It's the start of the pilot program, we're hoping to make it sure it'd be a big success. So just, you can contact Department of Public Service. That's all for tonight, thank you.
All right, anything from the legal department today?
I just note that Veterans Day is coming up and, uh, give a thank you for our freedom out to all our veterans.
Yep, I echo that. All right, uh, as we always do as customary, I at least ask to give the, the clerk a reprieve for tomorrow and his long day. Uh, are there any council members who wish to have comments today? Council McGabbout?
Thanks, just real quick, uh, on the agenda today was the approval for the Westland Community Foundation's Christmas toy drive that's coming up at the end of the month. The event will be here at City Hall. Uh, we, we have entertainment and refreshments, uh, when you come to drop off your toys. So come and stay for the program as.
So, come and stay for the program as well. But, this year, we'll also have drop boxes, and they're in place now. One is at Fire Station 1, which is right next to City Hall here. And, the other one is at the Wayne Westland Federal Credit Union. So, if you can't make it to the event, still want to donate some toys, that, you know, we work in conjunction with the Salvation Army to help out the families. So, if you can't make it to the event, there are drop boxes available, again, at Fire Station 1 and at the Wayne Westland Federal Credit Union. That's all I have. Thanks.
Does any other council member have comments? All right, I'll just, really quick, I'm just going to thank again Caleb Sadie and Aubrey for all their hard work in the school district, and remind everybody it is Veterans Day this weekend, so thank a vet. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?